Yes.
Can I just tell everybody who Sarah is?
Yes.
So Sarah is our new deputy city clerk and she's training and learning to do the council meetings in the back there.
Very good. Welcome, Sarah. All right, we'll do roll call.
Thank you. Mayor LaBar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Nikai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Ott is absent and Councilmember Zilwaga.
Present.
Thank you.
So before we begin this evening, I just want to make a public announcement that tonight, I know there were some people who anticipated probably speaking on a topic, but tonight is initial posting and we will not be taking public comment. So if you're here for item eight A, public comment will happen on August 4th, which is the public hearing. Because this evening, the council and Charis will not be speaking on the topic. So this is not an open public hearing. This is just simply to move it to public hearing. So this is initial posted. So if any of you are here for that, I'm sorry, I apologize that we won't be taking public comment. But please come back to the August 4th meeting. That is where we will be holding our comments, Charis's comments and the public's comments. It'll be all one big evening. So bring popcorn and probably something to drink. So I just wanted to get that out of the way in case anyone is here and you don't want to hang out through the entire evening because it's not that exciting. So. All right, and we're going to go ahead then and begin with item number three ceremonies, presentations and appointments. And we have appointment to the board of review.
Thank you, Mayor LaBar. This evening, the city clerk's office has continued to advertise for vacant positions on our boards and committees. And we received an application for the board of review from Patrick Vitagliano. And I don't know if he's here because I don't know Patrick. Are you in the audience with us? Okay, he's not in the audience and he's not online.
So we all know what that means then.
Okay.
So we're going to go ahead and move that until Patrick can attend in person.
Okay.
Or at least by Zoom.
I'll call him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was quick. Four additions, deletions or corrections. We have non five consent calendar. I'm going to ask council, are there any particular questions on any of these items or are you comfortable just going ahead and voting for consent for all items?
I would like the chief to give us a bit of a overview of the two IGAs that he's bringing.
Do I see the chief? I did see him. I don't see him currently. Oh.
Eating. Oh, there he is.
Donuts.
Oh, he's right here.
Chief.
So can we do item A? Yeah. So so before the chief presents then, can we go ahead and do item A?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item five A, approval of the June 2022 statement expenditures.
I'll second.
Can we have comment on that one? Just before the vote.
Sure, that gives Suzanne a second to catch up.
Well, I just see that we purchased this cool piece of equipment and I just wonder if we could get a picture of it at not this week, but another week. With with a Bobcats that does the grass cutting and all that. Apparently we got some pretty slick piece of equipment. It'd be just kind of nice to see it. We're spending all that money on it.
Just a request, nothing to do with a vote.
We'll see if they can do that.
Yeah.
Council, it's available. You may vote.
So chief, council just kind of wanted you to summarize, I guess, items B and C for us and you can just collaboratively.
Yes, good evening. I'm sorry for the delay. I thought I had enough time to run to the sink and back.
Sorry.
One second, sir. I don't have. Okay, now I have it. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, you can. Sorry. Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Again, mayor, as you mentioned, if it pleases council, the comments that I'll give on B and C are specifically the same. In sum, these agreements were in place part of my arrival here. They're simply a renewal of the agreements now with me standing at place as a department director for a standard service agreement that we've apparently been in in collaboration with for years.
Are there any particular questions, council?
So they're preexisting and you're just signing off on them for another period of time?
Yes, sir.
Is that all? Okay, then can we get a motion?
I can make a motion to approve item B, approval of adult protective service cooperative and item C, approval of a cooperative agreement between Teller County and of human services for judicial district office, law enforcement and et cetera.
I'll second the motion. Et cetera.
Thank you, council. You may vote.
Just briefly before you sit down, council, the chief also has an item on 10B. And he has a presentation that he can give, but he doesn't. He doesn't care whether he does it or not. He just brought it in case we want it. So if we don't want it, then I know chief, you're still here, but this way you'll know. Do you guys want the opioid presentation or are you comfortable with the topic?
Mayor, not to interrupt, but for the sake of everyone's consideration, my presentation is simply going to be verbal commentary.
Okay.
Based on the attachments you have.
Okay. So.
Yeah, kind of.
Few comments.
Good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, mayor, motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are to six public comments on items not on the agenda. Okay, I have one person in the audience signed up for items not on agenda and that is Tracy Bennett. So Tracy's coming on up to the podium for us.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Bennett. Twenty years ago, last month on June 9th, the Hayman fire blew up here in our community. Just outside Lake George, just west of my house up at Wildhorn Ranch. That was a life changing event for me, my family and this community. As the fire at that point in time became the largest forest fire in the state of Colorado. I'm wearing tonight the 10 year anniversary shirt, which happened 10 years ago. This is the 20 year anniversary now. Sitting at Java Junction over in Gold Hill Square. I'm watching the flames and the smoke and everything occurring up in the northwest corner of the county. Freaking out basically in Lorena Towns and the owner of Java Junction said, you need to do something. How about raise money for the fire departments? So the firefighters fund was was initiated at that point in time. We were able to raise over $100,000 and over a million dollars worth of supplies, we estimate, came in over that three week time period. You gotta stop and think this is pre social media, pre Facebook, free anything other than me on the radio and TV every day for three weeks solid. Pretty much asking for whatever we want, what we wanted and needed for the fire department. So I had a wants and needs lists from all the fire departments in the community here. From up by Deckers, which was involved in the fire, West Creek, all the way out to Lake George, Four Mile, Northeast Teller County, Green Mountain Falls, Divide. All of these fire departments were involved in the fire and we split all that money among them equally to buy equipment and for training for their fire department members. Twenty years later, not much has changed. I don't have to worry too much about a forest fire at my house anymore because it's all burned up. The fire burned up to the foundation of our house and for whatever reason, our house did not burn. They never could figure out why it didn't burn to the ground. We met every criteria on the forestry service list, why my house shouldn't be here anymore. All my neighbors' houses did burn down. So it's very important and I just wanted to remind her about the fire, how fire is a huge issue in this community and the importance of continuing to fund our fire departments for training so that we're ready for forest fires in our community in the future, which are going to happen. There's, we can't stop it. Nature's going to do its thing. But we can be prepared by having local hot shot crews, which we didn't even think about 20 years ago. Now it's a big deal. But continuing continuing that funding and raising of money for our fire departments and supporting our fire departments in this community. Not only here in for Netco, but the surrounding fire departments as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
So thank you for your time tonight and I'm glad my house is still there. My daughter was pretty happy to when she got home and it was still there.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Appreciate it.
All right. We are off to item eight A and I believe our city attorney just wanted to make a brief statement before we begin.
Good evening, council and mayor. I've received a bunch of questions about the nature of this vote and I just wanted to clarify what it is and what it is not. This is not a vote on the merits of this proposal. This is not a vote on substance. You're going to have an opportunity to vote on that later. This is a vote on process and essentially this is a vote for the applicant being entitled to a fair hearing. And I'd like to believe respectfully that the vote up here would be unanimous for the applicant having a fair hearing. And so that's the comment I wanted to make, just to clarify what we're not voting on mostly.
Very good.
Thank you.
Remember, this is initial posting.
Right. Can I make a motion? More question?
Well, we Karen's going to give us a presentation first.
But I thought we weren't having all that.
We're having a brief presentation by step.
Wanted to move it.
And you can make the motion. I mean, unless everyone wants to skip the presentation, but I think it's necessary.
Just very briefly, my job is to clearly state for the record what is before you. And this evening, we're asking you to approve on initial posting, the format of the ordinance, which is ordinance number 1427, series 2022. This is a request by NES Incorporated, the applicant, on behalf of New Life Holding Corporation, the owner and its affiliated operating nonprofit corporate entities, Andrew Womack Ministries Incorporated and Charis Bible Colleges Incorporated. This is to amend the PUD plan, PBD, which is the planned unit development, planned business development for the sanctuary located 800 Gospel Truth Way with a legal description of what one, the sanctuary Woodland Park, Colorado. To increase the student housing building heights and to remove a pass condition of approval and set the public hearing for August 4th, 2022.
Frank, are you ready?
Your turn.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1427, series 2022 for initial public for public.
Public hearing.
For public here.
Say it.
Say it. For public hearing. An initial posting for public and set the public hearing for August 4th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Sorry.
I second.
Okay.
Council, you may vote. Thank you, council. A motion has passed unanimously.
Very good. All right, now we are on to item nine A, public hearings and a approval of new liquor license for red diamond. And I believe Suzanne's presenter for that.
Thank you, mayor. This evening before you council, you do have a item for a new liquor license. I think some of you may have remember, may remember James Daimler from a few months ago. He was here with a different liquor license to present to you. He had, he's doing something different now. And he is opening a restaurant pub area in the Wildflower Bakery. I think all of you know if I say where that is. So James is, so it's in the Gold Hill, the movie theater side, the very end. There used to be a bakery there. So James has taken the lease over there and he's remodeling and getting ready to open up a restaurant. Before you, you have the hotel restaurant liquor license and James's business is the Red Diamond Gastro Truck LLC. Doing business as the Red Diamond Gastro Pub. And this business is located at 112 Elm Street. As I said earlier, the applicant is James Daimling. He has a current LLC tax, sales tax license, FBI number, N number. The location is eligible to be licensed and the possession of the property is documented by a lease expiring January 31st, 2024. Just so council knows, the reason I tell you that every time is liquor requires the lease to be for a minimum of a year. So that's why I always give you that piece of information. The application was submitted to us on June 16th. We posted the property on July 6th. The public notice was posted on the city website, July 6th. And the character of this applicant is not an issue for this hearing. Mr. Daimler has paid all the applicable fees and he is ready to go with council's approval. I'd like to introduce James again so he can tell you a little bit about what his plans are. And I think there was someone on council that had a question for James about the name of his business.
So yeah, hello again. My last one fell through for some reasons that were meant to be, I guess. I'm remodeling the whole bakery. It's not going to look anything like it was and it's still the same concept. I still want to do the $6 burger nights, the fish fries and the $6 burger nights, the fish fries. It's still the same concept as we discussed before. It's just a different location that I get to remodel and turn it into mine.
So we were just curious what red diamond meant. Is there any significance?
There really is.
Oh, good.
When I was a kid, I had a group where there's a five friends of mine and one of my friends always called me red diamond. He said, because red diamonds are hard to find. And it always stuck with me and he's still one of my best friends. And so I got a tattooed on my arm and then I made it after that. So that is one of my buddies kind of stuck with me the whole time.
Excellent. And why, my last question is why gastro?
So gastro pubs are, the best way to describe it is kind of like an upscale pub.
Okay.
You know, like, I don't know if you've had my food, but it called like elevated comfort food, you know, so it's still stuff you recognize, like you would get at a normal pub, but I put my twist on it. So get, get, I can never say the word right. It's like gastronomical cuisine is like a type of cuisine where it's kind of influenced by wherever I feel like for the day, I guess, you know, so.
Excellent. Well, thank, thank you.
Thing for me. It's the best thing for me because I can change things a lot and cook what I like to cook.
Well, thank you for explaining it. It's just curiosity.
A lot of people, when they, I tell them that, they ask me if they're going to fart a lot.
I don't think you can say that.
He can say whatever.
And what's your, what's your response to them?
Ah, the same one you had, just the same one you had just now. I kind of laugh. I don't really know what to say.
So long as the crab melt is still on the menu.
Oh, yeah.
I'm good.
I have hood being installed in everything, so it's going to be in a full on, full on restaurant.
So. Counsel, anything further? All right, well, we look forward to it. You make excellent food.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Opening public comment. I don't have anyone signed up. I don't see any hands up in the audience. Are there any hands on Zoom?
There are not.
I'm now closing.
I just, I just have one.
Fine.
Come. Your liquor license, what's, what's the type of spread of alcohol you're kind of catering for?
I mean, it'll be a full service bar. So, but I, my focus will be beer. I'll buy a four on tap and a root beer on tap from Bristol Brewing in the Springs. They brew their own root beer, which is, I don't drink, so which is really good. So I'll have that on top as well, but probably like 30, probably like 30 beers.
Excellent. Cool. Nice.
But I'll, I'll call it.
Ah, no, no, I'll have all liquor. So we'll have cocktails and whatnot as well.
All right, so now I'll make a motion for you. Very good. I make a motion to approve the new liquor license for red diamond gastro pub doing businesses red diamond gastro truck located at 111, 112 Elm Street, Woodland Park, Colorado. I'll second.
Thank you, council. You may vote. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously. Congratulations, James.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now off to item 10. New business 10A for resolution 895. And even though it's not in here, I'm aware that this is an M3XP2 business, which my father-in-law is a part of. So I'm going to recuse myself from voting. But I'm not going to remove myself from the dais because I don't think I'm going to influence any of you guys. But and we have Karen as the presenter for that.
Good evening.
Good evening. Were you waiting for a response?
Go fast. Sorry. It's been a day. I started with a little complaint to IT and they tried to fix it and the entire laptop took a massive dump. So I've not had my right arm attached for most of the day. So we're just slowly getting reappointed here.
Welcome to my world.
Thank you for your patience. So tonight I bring to you a request by M3XP2 LLC, the applicant and 19350 Group LLC, which is the property owner. They're here requesting a two-year extension of a conditional use permit and a site plan review which relates to an approval for a 72,400 square foot storage and rental facility that's proposed on a 4.75 acre tract on lot one, Woodland Park Saddle Club filing number one. The address of the property is 19350 Highway 24 in the service commercial zone district. So here before you, this particular side, the first couple of slides are going to help with orientation. We have the overall map of the city of Woodland Park with the highway 24 coming up in our distinctive horseshoe. And down here in the southeast corner of the the city is where this subject property sits on the essentially west side of the highway of that area. When we look at our zoning map, it is a zone service commercial in this dark purple. The site is highlighted in this red circle. Other properties and zonings in and around this area include community commercial, multifamily suburban, suburban residential further over to the east. And then there is a PUD to the south of the subject property and that's where the Walmart and a couple of other businesses are located. When we look at an aerial photo of this location, here we have the the site outlined in red. You know, on the the west side of the highway immediately to the the south southeast is within Village Mobile Home Park and then further to the south is Walmart. So this is currently an undeveloped piece of property that would have access off of Highway 24. So just for refreshing folks' memory, I did include in the the packet, maybe not in the packet, but definitely here a overall site plan of the property with the, and north is to the, to my, to the right of the slide. So we have the highway here in the the bottom right corner of the property where access then comes in off of that, up towards the top of the page and how that subject property gets laid out with Fountain Creek at the top of the page. And the buildings here in the center. And then a couple of elevations in terms of what was previously approved for this property in terms of what the storage building would look like. So the project history, since this has been around since 2018, it was July 19th. And on this particular slide, the blue and the black are definitely different things. The blue being land use entitlement approvals for the use. The black text relates to more building permit kind of related activity. So the first thing I note here is July 19th of 2018 was when the initial approval was granted by city council with ordinance 1330. And then shortly after, about six months after that, they started work on this project in February of 2019. Submitted for a commercial development zoning development permit for the building. And then later that same month in February 2019, they submitted for a grading permit. Both of those expired a year later due to inactivity. And then in July of 2020, the initial approval for the conditional use permit in the site plan review expired. It was, and that was, I remember right back when COVID was unfolding and very interesting things going on in our country at that point. So it was about six months after the expiration when they came in and got their application. The application was submitted to extend the conditional use permit site plan review. And at that same time, they applied for another zoning development permit to install water line infrastructure. So it was two months after that, month and a half of that, when city council granted that extension. And since we work on the anniversary date of the permits, that extension went to July 19th of 2022. That same month after the extension was granted, they submitted construction plans for the water line infrastructure. Those were not approved. And then again, due to no activity, those expired a year later, just this, this past March of 2022. So this year, I will say the applicant's been very diligent and very concerned about getting their renewal request in in a timely manner. And it was actually in April of this year. Three months in advance of the expiration when they submitted that request. So it's just taken a little time to to go through our process for a variety of reasons. And the planning commission was very comfortable with having that in a timely manner. So did not see that as an issue. One of the things we'd like to check at this point is the future land use map, especially since we did adopt a new comprehensive plan. This is what the future land use map says. And in this particular area with the parcel outlined in green, it is targeted for commercial development. So this use that they're proposing is continues to be consistent with what we would like to see developed in that particular area of the city. With this request, we did send it for a couple of, for some review and comment and we did receive comments back from Kip Wiley, our deputy city manager, operations director. He was discouraging extension of this and specifically saying disapprove the request. He was been concerned about the length of time that this has been sitting here with no progress. And was suggesting that when they get to a point where they want to proceed, they can resubmit. And then the city engineer also had concerns about trip generation requirements and store water calculations likely having changed from the original submital. So they may need to do additional improvements over what was previously approved. Although those could potentially be taking, be addressed through the construction drawing, review and approval. So the planning commission heard this on June 9th. And then based on the information contained in the staff report, as well as what was presented at that public hearing. They actually recommended to city council that you approve a two-year extension of U-PASS formerly Woodland Park Self-Storage. The conditional use permit and site plan review with that extension running to July 19th of 2024. And so what you have in front of you this evening is a resolution. So based on the planning permission recommendation of this, the bottom line here would be recommending to approve. Actually, excuse me, it's a resolution number 895, series 2022, granting that two-year extension of a conditional use permit. 18 dash 01, which was ordinance 1330 in 2018 and site plan review 18 dash 01. Does that extension date being July 19th, 2024? Questions?
I have, I have one. If you go back to the, if you go back to the slide, it had all of the dates. I think it was the March 14th, 2021. Where you said that the water infrastructure was not approved before it expired. Do you know why it was not approved?
They were provided comments and then just took no action on the the comments that they needed to address.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, are the applicants going to address the council? Okay, I'll save my question. Thank you.
Karen, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm trying to use precedents, you know, on other extensions that we've granted. Have any building codes or anything changed from whatever level of drawings that have been submitted that would cause them to need to be modified?
Under the building codes?
Any code, any code, building or municipal codes, any codes that would have required them to change their design at whatever level. I know they don't have everything fully designed out, but.
Based on the city engineer's comments, I guess there, we don't know without the the data and actually, you know, looking at a more finalized stormwater report. But there is the potential that pond depth, configuration, location might need to be modified in order to address stormwater. in order to address stormwater and depending upon traffic volumes that may trigger a little bit different configuration or issue at the the exit or the the connection to highway twenty four. That would still require a C dot access permit. So there there is a possibility. But I I don't have any.
But those haven't gone through the approval process completely anyway, correct?
In some ways, it's like you're back in what, four years ago at this point, you know, where this was first approved in two thousand and eighteen. We were waiting for construction drawings to come back in to then start that whole level of detailed review before they actually break ground.
Okay, so this is literally the the shell around everything else that goes into the construction. Where it's the conditional use permit by itself, everything else is still default, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Karen, I have a couple of questions for you. One is, it says at the beginning of your staff findings that in April twenty eighteen approval was given, including a lengthy list of conditions. And then I've seen here, there's the timelines haven't been met over a course of about five years. Two of your staff are recommending to reapply when they're ready. Why do you not share their point of view?
I did not take a particular point of view. If I remember right, and the planning mission actually based on information that was provided at their public hearing were the ones that came up with the recommendation for extension.
So if you've got areas where this doesn't address where the where the development needs to be now. What's the advantage of just saying yes to extension on this when it has to be revisited anyway? Why wouldn't we say start again, bring it to us with the updated data that's needed and requirements five years later? I mean, it's like, the idea was you you apply for a permit and then you go about building it. Well, this hasn't happened.
And the applicant will dress that because they did they did a planning commission. Don't disappoint the gentleman. And part of jost my train of thought.
It's on your computer. No, sorry.
It's that part that got lost in the dump today.
Probably is. I think at the planning commission, like that they did present some some very valid points. And just because we haven't seen anything doesn't mean that they're not doing activity. And then the other reason, if I remember correctly, was the the public hearing process and that level of initial approval and stuff is a pretty heavy lift. So they were wanting to to continue on with, you know, what they've already done through that that initial entitlement process. So that was part of what they had explained to planning commission at that time.
And speaking of the conditions, those conditions would remain in effect with the extension, correct?
Yes, and I leave the resolution in front of you specifically references the conditions that are outlined in that initial ordinance from two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, we don't need to go through them. I just wanted for the public record, all the previous conditions would stay in place.
Yes.
Thank you.
So my question is going to be kind of twofold to get a response from staff and response from the applicant about what kind of see, I'm not coming up with words either, Karen. How much difficulty would this put upon you if we were to ask you to apply when the time was read, you were ready? Not that, you know, we're considering one thing or another, but what would it look like if the recommendations that the two staff members have given us were to influence the council to say, start over? I'd just like to understand what that looks like and what imposition, that's the word, that that would put upon you. And Karen, you might be able to help with that as well.
It's like a whole new application. So we start over with the, you know, the the drawing set. Just that.
Okay. And the fees would be have to be paid again for the conditional use permit. Okay, that helps me. And I'm sure you guys have some things to say as well that will help me as well. Thank you.
And what do those fees look like, Karen? If that's all it is?
It's not all it is.
Roughly.
I'm going to estimate a thousand dollars ish. I don't have our fee schedule memorized. Yeah, probably.
There's, there's a lot goes into CUP.
Yeah.
Besides just the fee.
Yeah, no, there's, there's our fees do not adequately cover staff time either.
Why don't we go ahead and let the applicants come up? If Karen, if you're finished.
I'm good if you are.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello, Michael.
I'm Michael Harper. Address is fourteen ninety three County Road seven eighty two Woodland Park. For your benefit, we also have our engineer Eric Smith is online and he can also assist in answering questions that are more directly related to anything technical about the the project as well as he has a unique position of background in the application in assisting with that. So feel free to ask him questions as well. So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for this hearing and to review an application of the extension of the CUP for the U pass storage facility. Who would have guessed that we would be standing here once again before the planning commission and city council to go through the the application for CUP? Nonetheless, we are. When M three XP two initially applied for and was approved for the CUP to build the storage facility in July of two thousand and eighteen. It was a much different world. The project met the conditions of the application process and was well on its way to a groundbreaking in the spring of two thousand and twenty. The project had partnership agreements in place. A feasibility study showed the project model worked in Woodland Park market. And our leading lending process was already in process and initiated. We move forward with all the well meaning intent and a process to begin construction. We had pricing and final planning through the fall and winter of two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. With pricing being known and final engineering being far enough along to make cost estimates reliable. We made a final application for lending on the project mid two thousand and nineteen. A project this size and the amount takes three to ten months for lending to be finalized typically. But as we all know, everything changed in the winter of two thousand and twenty with the pandemic. Lending applications were put on hold. We had no choice but to put the project on hold at that time until we could see a way forward for lending and revising a start schedule for the project. There were two years of uncertainty during that time in which lending and predictable pricing to support this project was not possible. That, along with the price escalations and uncertainty of the supply chain for materials to build this project. And again, that delayed our ability to build a certain and predictable model for our own comfort and that of our lender. Now, after finalizing an updated feasibility study, we feel that the pricing and supply is predictable enough to move forward with this project. Financing is applied for, and we feel certain the project can move forward in the next building cycle. We asked that our application for extension be considered and approved so we can move forward with building this asset to the Woodland Park community. And let me just tag that by saying in this process, not only is the application itself lengthy and the engineering and the modeling and the financial models that have to come through and projected. We have spent a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars plus in this process just to get to this point. And so we're, we're asking that you take some consideration of that. Yeah, we ask that you approve this so we can move forward. Thank you. And I'm available for questions and so is Eric.
Thank you, Michael. You answered my question.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I'm Mr. Harper. Do you think even with the feds talking of, you know, point increases, I think it's next month. You're, you're not worried about securing your loan, correct?
We're not at this time, no. You know, in the lending process, they require that we have everything in place for we are not applying for a building permit at this time, but we have to at least have our CUP in order for them to move forward.
When do you target breaking ground, do you think?
So with some luck and weather and those kinds of things, we will attempt to get the water line in that has to cross under the highway. Doesn't disrupt anything for the highway.
I remember.
This fall. And then the building cycle that I'm referring to would be next spring and with an opening in the fall.
Very good. I think it's a good product. I'd like to see it. It's located in a good place. So I'm hoping that this will go through favorably for you.
Mr. Harper, if I remember, last time you guys were in front of us, you were asking for an extension on the paving across the street. Is that right?
That is actually a different.
Project.
Project. That's a different request. It doesn't really fall under the it it's not part of the CUP. Now, it may indeed end up being part of the building permit to be to qualify for that.
I don't know where you're going with that. No, my question's more, if I remember correctly, the reason that they were asking for an extension on the paving across the street was so that you could do the drilling for the water line.
Yes.
And you're telling us you haven't done that yet?
Right.
Can you? I know you paved it. So how does that? I guess I'm just trying to understand the sequencing of, so you still have to disrupt the pavement on the other side to bring that water line through?
We may, however, once we were able to locate where the water line actually was located, we found that it was in an entirely different location than what the city understood it to be and what the initial engineering showed it to be. So we have located it now and and we're ready to be able to move forward. It may indeed disrupt some of the paving there, but there that paving for that particular business needed to be done anyway. So.
Understood. It was, it was, we were getting our head around why that was necessary to give the extension for that. And now it looks like you're going to have to do. You're not going to upset the highway, though. Is that right? Are you going to do underground boring in a way that it doesn't?
Underground boring, so you won't even know what's going on.
Okay.
Just, just to, for my clarification, for the record, the project across the street, the U L place, that is not an M three project, correct? So it really is not relevant other than the paving was going to be disrupted by the water line that M three was going to be.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Also a joint project was a joint project? Thanks.
So I just have a quick housekeeping question. It's no big deal. You guys actually own the land, right? You've already purchased the land. Perfect. Thank you.
Anything further?
Okay. Michael, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, anything further for Karen? All right. Well, when you're ready to make a motion, a public comment. I don't have anyone signed up for this. I don't see any hands up in the audience.
There's one right here.
Hand up. Please come up to the podium if you'd like to speak. Just give us your first and last name.
My name's Kellya Lyman. I've been a native to Teller County my entire life. Very happy to be here. Just a question for the applicants or Karen, if either of you could give me a little bit of direction. I know that the creek runs right behind this property and I was just wondering if there was any. It's not going to disrupt the water or anything. No, okay, just making sure. Yeah, that was, that was the only question I had was just about water waste and that kind of thing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Suzanne, do you have anyone on Zoom?
I do not.
All right. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution eight ninety five series twenty twenty two as presented this evening.
I'll second it.
You shouldn't have.
Who made that second? Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed five zero. Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, we are now off to item ten B and that is the opioid intergovernmental agreement. Chief.
We're back.
We're back.
Mayor Council, very briefly, for those of you interested, a very quick summary. I'm sure the package is self explanatory, but this item stems from attorney general lawsuits against big pharma and opioid companies for their involvement in the opioid crisis we're seeing across med states. In sum, this item basically gives us the ability to take the twenty percent of those funds that are designated for the local jurisdictions and and either choose to take those funds directly or opt out of those funds for a more regional approach to this problem. I presume that you've seen those breakdowns in the item. However, just for a very brief recap, over the first year, funding for the entire region is almost four million dollars. The second year is about one point six. Of that total, our portion to the city for year one is only about sixty four hundred dollars. The year two is yet to be determined, but over eighteen years for the city, it's about fifty seven and change. In my history from the sandbox I used to play in, I can tell you that these issues hit us many years ago. So my opinion is with respect to this agenda item that we take an opt out stance pushing our twenty percent back into the regional approach, which gives us not only a wider footprint for impacting the community as a whole, but also takes care of pushing away some of the housekeeping items from our staff onto a more regionalized approach whereby they are hiring, essentially hiring people to do this work. Any basic questions on that?
On page seventy, it says that you were planning to advise counsel to take part, to use part of the administrative fee to hire a facilitator to develop a plan and do research. You're not going that route.
The regional approach.
So that's the region. Oh, the region is.
As a side note, I'd also like to notate that we as a regional council did meet last week. We had our first meeting. So those meetings have kicked off. City of Woodland Park is a voting delegate this year. So the city manager has appointed me the voting delegate. Teller County does have direct representation on the board as Commissioner Stone has been appointed the vice chair of the regional council board. So I feel like we're in pretty good hands at this point.
So just a question. Is, do we move to approve this in order to opt out?
I have to read the language and how the the motion will look, but the idea is to take an approval to opt out of receiving our direct funding in favor of the regional approach.
So I should put that language in approved to opt out or whomever makes.
That sounds appropriate, ma'am. As long as the language is indicative to the council that we're taking an opt out stance, should that be your approach? Appropriate, ma'am. As long as the language is indicative to the council that we're taking an opt out stance, should that be your approach?
So.
And this would strengthen our relationship with the county commissioners. They, they would appreciate us doing this, I assume.
Well, you know, sir, I would, I would suggest that having been through this at least at a, at a entry level back from where I come from. The regional approach has proven to be very, very strong because not only does it involve Teller County, but it involves our pass. So anytime you can strengthen a partnership and try to get ahead of the curve on an item such as touchy as this can be is a win in my opinion.
And that was one thing that we had worked with the commissioners, at least the Teller County commissioners, that we were trying as a city council. To improve our working relationship with them. So I think this is a step in that.
Absolutely. And, and just like to said, to reiterate, the regional council does have representation on board now in the presence of Commissioner Stone.
So let me just clarify, the agreement is to opt out.
The way I understand it is yes, ma'am. The agreement is to opt out of receiving the direct.
So it can be, it can be motioned as written. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So Chief, can I take the opportunity? I asked you this question offline a week or so ago. With this whole opioid issue for us to consider opting out or not, what's the, what's the severity? Of opioid use and abuse in Woodland Park, Teller County and region? Can you give us a thumbnail of what that looks like?
I'll do my best based upon the knowledge of the subject I have from, from just dealing with this for the last few years. Of course, you realize my footprint here is about four months old. However, I have not seen as many opioid related arrests here as I once have, shall we say, but I know it's here. What I'm hoping to do is use whatever information I have to help this regional council maybe take steps to get ahead of. Where do we take steps to shore up enforcement or what do we do as a collaborative to use these funds for education purposes? You may have seen already on our Facebook page, we've already pushed some stuff about fentanyl and raising the awareness of fentanyl, but. Specifically, I think you would, you would find that the drug cases are coming up, at least the discussions I've had with Sheriff Mike will indicate that he is seeing it. He's also taken me back to some of the things that you all were dealing with here some years ago regarding some cartel issues. Back in the, in the, in the areas that he has down off of Teller Road and whatnot. So I would suggest that the issue is prevalent. It is more prevalent, I would say, down the hill. I think that's the vernacular we like to use here up to pass down. But nonetheless, rest assured, I'm sure it has a very good hole here right now. We're just not seeing it. And the idea is to kind of abate it and get people aware of the problem before it becomes a major issue. We always keep our fingers crossed.
So by us consolidating the funds allows us to get strong regionally. And then if you need support in that, you get it.
Certainly.
Skill.
And again, when you look at our, our share of year one being. What is a relatively small portion of those funds. Anytime we can combat the problem as a unified front, it's always stronger than just to try to do it by yourself.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Colorado Regional Opioid Intergovernmental Agreement to opt out.
I second. Council may vote. We didn't take public comments.
We didn't.
We didn't. Hopefully nobody wanted to comment. There's nobody signed up.
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So counsel, in error of keeping, keeping us on this type of pace, I'd kind of like to skip down to D1. So that Michael can go ahead and give us the report that he wants to present and then we can go back and fast track through our things.
I'm glad Jeff's here. He's got time to think about a joke. And so I will turn it over to our finance director, Ambassador Lody, for the sales and use tax update.
Just one second. There we go. All right. So we have the May 2022 sales tax update. Sorry, my screen is getting cut off. So May 2022, year over year, we saw 1.3% increase over the previous year. It was $8,315 over. So year to date, that puts us 3.2% over last year, $89,532 more than we had last year. For lodging tax, we're continuing to see a humongous increase. Year to date, May over May, we're looking at 93.2%, which is 52,740. And for the month of May, we saw 66.2% increase, which was 13,368. If we look at the three year graph here for sales tax, that top purple line is our 2022. So you can see we're trending up just a little bit over January was kind of flat and then February, March and April, we saw it pick up a little bit about 5%. And then May, you can see we were back down at that 1.3. So it's seemed like it was going up and then it's, it's leveled out a little bit in this last month. But you can see that year over year, over year, we've seen an increase. This slide shows our actual versus our budget. So you can see in January, we were a little bit down because we were kind of flat and then February, March and April, we were pretty close to the projection. And then May, we were a little bit under again because our original projection was 5.5% increase. So 1.3 is clearly a little bit below what we'd like to see. And then lodging tax, it, it tells the story. I mean, the dark green line is our 2022 numbers and you can see they're just significantly over every other year. Any questions?
I'm surprised there are no questions.
Aaron, I do have one comment. It's got nothing to do with anything except the visual. Could you make the current one like red or something? So it's obviously a different color because those color grades, when you look at these charts, it's you go, uh, which is this now?
Will do.
Yeah.
Got it.
We need neon.
You got old people up here.
Michael, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Subtillery.
Nothing to add to, to Aaron's presentation, but just one other quick update. We, we recently had a conversation with Tom Henley, who's the new area representative for Black Hills Energy. Had a nice conversation with him about how we can go forward together with Black Hills. He did ask that I share with everybody, Black Hills does have some billing assistance programs available to residents of Woodland Park and elsewhere. If, if you go to the website for Black Hills Energy, you can learn about these. There, there's a number of different programs to help with rearranging payments. Just there, there's, there's a whole bunch of things that they can do. If, if you are having issues with your, your gas bill here in Woodland Park, you can call Black Hills Energy at 888-890-5554. Or again, go to their website or finally you can contact the city and we'll get you in touch with them too. And that's all I got.
Okay, we're gonna circle back then. I don't have any reports other than some events to announce. The Woodland Park Farmers Market is every Friday from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM at Memorial Park. July 29th is going to be party in the pavilion at the Youth Pass Cultural Center from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And it's going to feature food trucks, a silent disco and more, and tickets are going to be $10 per person and they can be purchased at the door. July 31st is Jazz in July with Swing Factory Big Band from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Upe Park Cultural Center. And August 2nd is Teller County's National Night Out from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Memorial Park. And we've all, the only thing I have to say is we've all heard about the issues with Verizon cellphone coverage. And our commissioners and city manager are working on a solution for us. So I just wanted to let the public know we are aware of it and we are trying to find a solution. So. Councilmember Case.
Hello. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, we are having a workshop, work session with Logan Simpson to kick off the. Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan rev- revision. Easy for me to say. It's Tuesday, July 26 via Zoom. I'm going to be on Zoom, but. I think they're meeting at the cultural center. I'm not sure. We have a new program coordinator. And numbers continue to look amazing in the programs and the, the WAC and the cultural center. They're doing a great job there. They are, the WAC for the year has a recovery rate of 66.55%. That's stunning.
Nice.
So they keep bringing that number higher and higher. As far as June goes, they were 101.56% recovery. So that's, that's stellar. So they're doing great work in the Parks and Rec Department. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We attended the change of command ceremony for the garrison at Fort Carson. Colonel Brown is now the garrison commander for Fort Carson. We also hung out with the scouts at the sports complex, Cub Pack 20 for their scout sports day. Thank you.
I have nothing.
I do have a DDA announcement. There is going to be a work session of the DDA board on Tuesday, July 26th, this coming Tuesday at 7:30 right here in the council chambers. The DDA board prepared questionnaires by soliciting questions from the DDA board members and the city staff. The questions were placed into a questionnaire that has been transmitted to both of the development teams. The Forge Works LLC as the first and the Tava House Properties LLC as the second. Both received and acknowledged that the questionnaire is in their hands. They have until Monday at 8:00 AM to complete the questionnaire, at which time the DDA will go through both proposals in full public view. Although there will be no public comment and no presentations by either party. Questions might be asked by the DDA board of the different development teams, but it is not a presentation. And it is not a public comment forum. It's just a work session for the DDA members to try to grapple with how to move forward.
And that's at 7:00 PM?
7:30.
7:30.
7:30 AM, 7:30 AM in the morning. We're, we're early risers on the DDA board. Sorry, Karen. And it'll be right here.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulaga.
Only a reminder that the. Only a reminder that the annual citywide cleanup for Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is on August 27th. It's a Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Frank, you're going to bring the scouts? August 27th is a Saturday morning, nine to one.
Heck with the scouts.
And bring the garrison. Yeah. And. So pre-registering is with G Johnson, Grace Johnson, G Johnson at cityofwp.net.
Great. Very good.
Frank, you're going to bring the garrison commander? Absolutely.
Mayor, can you talk, what were you saying about the cellphone thing?
I'll let Michael address it if he wants to.
So across the county, but particularly in Woodland Park, a lot of folks of all walks of life might have noticed. That they're, they can't make calls. They have really slow data. And it's become very acute in the past couple of months. And I think a lot of it has to do with people coming up during the summer tourism season and just overwhelming our cellular network. So the, the county commissioners have been kind of point on this issue. They've been in front of the media. They've been contacting Verizon. We've been instrumental in helping them get in touch with Verizon. I spoke with the media a couple of days ago on this as well. We, we have some leads on hopefully getting some new cell towers in place, additional cell towers in place and boosting the network capacity. Hopefully that will be resolved more quickly than not. But it's becoming a problem for just normal people, but perhaps more importantly for public safety. If public safety can't function, we got a problem.
So it's mostly for Verizon users.
I understand that AT&amp;T might have similar issues, but most of the public safety agencies around here are, including the city of Woodland Park are on Verizon.
You're on Verizon. Thank you.
Yeah, the congestion should be proportional. AT&amp;T versus Verizon. However, we have all the emergency services and safety features that makes it more of a concern over the AT&amp;T.
City attorney.
Robert, I'm sorry. I don't have a joke tonight other than the phone service up here. I'll do better next time. Nina, I'm sure was too humble to mention this herself, but at CML she was elected vice president of the attorney section statewide. And yeah, so she'll be president next year. So she'll be even harder to deal with. Thank you.
Well done. Yeah.
And so Mayor Suzanne had one quick thing in belief.
Yes, um, counsel, I'd like to just remind you, there's a survey that was sent to you. Well, there's two actually. I'll speak on both surveys. One was for the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan and one is from Logan Simpson. They are both due tomorrow. If I can just ask you to take a few minutes and fill both those surveys out, we would appreciate it.
Actually, one of them's from Logan Simpson for the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan. The other is for municipal fiber from HR Green. If you could wrap those up tomorrow. I won't break your knees then. Okay, that's it.
All right. Very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.